County Commissioners Meeting will come to order. Let the record show that today is June 29, 2020. The time is 9:00 AM. I wonder if I could pose upon our attorney Clint Smith to lead us into Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk to the Board, would you conduct the roll call, please?
Commissioner Flower.
Present.
Commissioner Kanda.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Yeah.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And Clerk to the Board Kelly Camper, present.
Thank you. Audience introductions.
Kara Evans, BACC Admin Assist.
And anyone on the phone?
Yes, Charlie Allen.
Say again, please.
Inmenden, High Altitude Garden Club.
Tracy Ballard, I think, said her name.
I got Tracy.
Barbara Mullin, High Altitude Garden Club.
Hey, go ahead. Ms. Shannon Gennavicii, all aboard West Cliff.
Kelly had a question.
Who is the...
I've got two people with the garden club. Could you say your names again?
I got Inm, I don't have the second one.
Inmenden.
Okay, and the second one?
Barbara Mullin.
Okay.
Thank you. And John Gennavicii?
Yeah, Gennavicii, representing all aboard West Cliff.
Great. Anyone else?
Did you get me Tracy Ballard?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to introduce themselves? Mr. Roth, how many do we have on the call?
Sir, we have six other people on the call.
Okay, we'll allow those to introduce themselves. Go ahead.
Cindy Flower.
Thank you.
Elaine Chavnon.
Say again, please.
Elaine Chavnon.
Thank you. So we should have three or four more to introduce themselves. Vern, do you have a record or just phone numbers?
I just have phone numbers. I see Cindy up there and one, two, three, four others, so, or five others rather, so I think everybody's introduced themselves.
Okay. All right, we'll move on. Thank you. Welcome. Thanks for joining us. Amendments to the agenda, gentlemen?
None from me.
Nor do I. Approval of the minutes? I don't believe we have any to approve this morning.
Are those you sent in draft or is that something else?
That was Board of Health.
Oh, I didn't see it. It just says Board of Health and then...
I think you had sent some that had already been approved.
Yeah.
Yeah. Commissioner Items, Commissioner Prince, would you like to begin?
Thank you, sir. Since our last meeting on the 17th, I attended the Board of Health meeting on the 17th with the pre-war...
In the mic, sir, please.
Sorry. On the 17th, I also attended the pre-war line meeting. The 23rd, the CES meeting. On the 23rd, the recovery meeting. Upper Arkansas area council government was on the 24th. The table of housing on the 25th. And then Board of Health again on the 26th. If I may, I'd like to report on a conversation I had with Newell, who is a member of the school board. I spoke to him on my way in this morning. They are under the gun to get...
They started with him?
To decide whether they want to handle this community grant that the school received.
Perfect timing.
He informed me that there was a component of the county involved in that. I was unaware of that. We did not hear that from our report Friday. My understanding is the county may be the fiscal agent to handle the money on that, but I'm not certain. He was not certain. But it did say that there was a component of a public health nurse for the public health agency.
Hold on. Can you silence your phones, please?
Somebody needs to mute their phone in phone line there.
Thank you. So just to continue on, so the deadline is July 1st. He said kind of...
If you've called in on the telephone, we'd ask that you mute your cell phone or your phone line, please. Vernon, would you mute everybody?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So he asked me, their deadline is July 1st, so, and they've had it for...
Line muted.
Since the beginning of June. I think he told me June 9th. I'm not positive. But why this comes to us today, when it's due in two days, I was a little miffed, but that's besides the point. He asked me what the commissioners would do, and I told him, of course, that I have no way of knowing what the commissioners would vote on. I am not the county commissioners. I said, I told him that I felt that it's likely the commissioners, if it's a pass through, that we would receive the funds and then issue it to them. We've done that before. I suspected that the commissioners, once they have facts, will be able to make a decision. But at this point, we're not in a position to do that. So he said, well, what should I report to my meeting this morning? And I told him I would say that the commissioners were distressed, that this was, the intention we had at the time, that this was denied. The question was asked about public health nurse. Can we take it over as a county as opposed to the school? So I told him that we were very interested in having this done. This sounds like a wonderful thing. It's opioid bullying, social races, and just all kinds of wonderful stuff that the kids could do. So, for the students. It also will help with the Amish community, those homeschool folks and others. So I told him that I cannot speak for the county commissioners, but I would certainly say in your meeting that he spoke to me and that we would certainly be willing to entertain that. And likely, unless there's some financial component or something that we're not knowing, it's likely we'd approve it, but I cannot even say anything. So that's my report on that this morning. I'm distressed because they have to have an approval from us by, before they turn it in on July 1st, which means either we have a consensus approval this morning without a vote, since it's not on the agenda, or we hold a special meeting, or we're just denied being part of this due to lack of understanding of what this is and how it works. So that's kind of where we stand.
Great. Anything else, sir?
That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Hannah?
Yeah, I got a few things.
Yeah, if you don't... Good morning. Hold on just a second, Bill, if you don't mind. So, your name, sir?
Charlie Ellison.
Oh, Charlie.
Sorry. Got a new beard.
Sunglasses and mask and beard, yes. Would you mind sitting out right out there in the hallway where you can see in here?
I'm here for Shannon's piece.
Oh, okay.
Which is at the end, I know.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Take a chair if you want. Oh, you got one.
Thanks. Yeah, and actually, I may have to ask you to do the same thing.
Outside?
We're not, this meeting wasn't open to the public.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I just didn't, I knew, I didn't know if you had that information.
No, we did not, and it's not on the agenda.
They had the grant since August and just told us about it in June.
Thanks, Dorian.
Sorry for the interruption. Commissioner Hannah, go ahead.
Okay, similar things. Board of Health, a couple of those meetings, of course. Then with the airport board on the AWAS grant, we did get the funding squared out, how we received that money and be reimbursed, we've been reimbursed the first tranche we've had for a little over 12,000 bucks. Have a $5,000 invoice pending that they had included on their budget. Your calculations so that we can get that paid immediately when they invoice us, before that was completed through 30 June. Also, we discussed the taxi lane. I've got with Gary Hyde as well, so they can scrape that out, so get that ready to put some road base on and oil at some point if they've got the plan. And then the concrete, we had a discussion with the fire department out there on the plan. They're working together on getting some estimates and figuring out when and how to fix that.
So that hasn't been fixed yet?
Not fixed yet, but it's...
Concrete?
No. No, they had, they had started on the process and then all this stuff happened. So back on the calendars, so we'll know. And they want to try to get it fixed before the picnic that they're trying to plan soon. And they've got the fire trucks off in the area where it's bad, so they're in a station. They're going to coordinate it so they get the truck out of the barn and be ready to build it. All right, had a good talk also with Century Link on the fiber program. They're working as a partner with the program, both beating the towers and the fiber program that we have with the county of towns as well. And so that's good, very good. They've sent a letter out to all the users and intend as part of that program to connect the wetmore phone lines that were damaged in the flood a couple of years ago. Also, as you know, you all were attending the Saddle Club Water Project, and Tom, you're going to give us an update on that all day. So I'm not going to say any more about that. And finally, I did have a talk with the Board of Education President at Troy Fung Gardner, who helped on that grant. And the bottom line I got out of it was they're going to try to straighten out all the information flow problems and what the actual facts are to date in the meeting that I wish we could attend. And I think that meeting is at 10, if I'm not mistaken.
You are correct.
Is that correct? Okay. So we'll find more of the facts and how we can support it. Sounds like a good thing to support it, if it's the right thing to do. And I think that brings me up to speed.
Great, thank you. I'll just report quickly. I have a phone call this afternoon with Nate Eklaff to discuss the, from Piper Samler, I'm sorry, to discuss moving forward with the Justice Center project. So he has been reaching out and just wanted to touch base with us. So I said I would have a conversation this afternoon.
I had one other thing.
Go ahead.
Yeah, one, one thing I did fail to mention from a commissioner point of view. The tower task force is working well, the economic recovery task force. And I did get ahold of Charles Vogel, and they're going to assist us in our request as the Board of Health to understand the businesses where they stand and if there are other needs, so we can have a meeting as soon as the order from the state comes down and we understand what modifications we might like or change or whatever that we've got forward on the Board of Health point of view. So I'll let you know about that soon. I'll send you an email on the progress.
Great, thank you. Let me go through my calendar and then I'll get back to my other notes. June 22nd, I participated in a CCI Mountain District Counties meeting. It was a Zoom conference, lasted a couple hours. It was an interesting meeting, 13 counties in the Mountain District of Colorado. I think 11 of the 13 counties were on the call. So the primary purpose of that call was to discuss economic recovery, status of each of the counties, impact of coronavirus and that kind of thing. So it's kind of eye-opening. We certainly have not, by comparison, been impacted to the extent of a lot of counties that rely heavily on the tourism industry. And really, we continue to be kind of in the forefront of counties that have not had a significant number of positive cases and obviously deaths, so I felt good about that. It was just disconcerting to listen to some of the other counties and the things they're going through. It's just amazing when they rely so heavily on the tourism industry and that basically was shut down completely in those counties. It was just brutal, the impact on them. So not to diminish the impact on our own county, but certainly does not compare to some of those counties on the I-70 corridor and that kind of thing. And then, of course, Economic Recovery Task Force meeting. And then also participated in the CES teleconference meeting on the 22nd. Also attended the water project pre-construction meeting. Custer County Site Selection Services Status Meeting on the 24th. And then on the 24th and 25th, I helped assisted with that waterline project. It's progressing. We started at Fourth and Main and went down through the county shopyard, and they're about three-fourths of the way across the county shopyard, and they're digging up to the fairgrounds today. So I'll check on that project this afternoon when we're done here. It's going pretty well. We had some issues with some utilities, both of which were not located. We located them early, quickly. Anyway, we got that, we got those repaired and then kept moving, so. Let me finish and then I'll come back to that because I've got another question for you. And then on the 26th, attended the Board of Health meeting, as did you, gentlemen. One of the things I wanted to talk about was we had committed to spend up to $30,000 on this waterline project. It's not going to take that much money. The fire department has committed $10,000 to go towards that project. We're at, right now, our share, the county's share. If the county and the Saddle Club split the remaining balance of that... And none of this is set in stone. A lot of this discussion happened before we ever knew how much the material was going to be in the first place. We need to decide if we want to take the county's share out of capital improvement or community outreach is really what it boils down to. Probably looking at 4,000 bucks or so. Originally, we talked about the 30,000 coming out of capital improvement. If we want to take our share out of community outreach, we can do that. But we can also take it out of capital improvement. So I just wanted to throw that out, see what you thought.
Going to decide now or...
We'd like to because we're going to have to pay this bill. This initial invoice to Core and Main was for 16,000.
Can't we either, either fund, can't we later decide to change it?
No, we cannot reimburse the community outreach.
That's right.
So, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, my preference, my preference would be to take out of capital improvements. That's what capital improvements is for. Community outreach, we have many organizations asking us for assistance. I'd like to leave money in the outreach program. So if an organization comes and says, will you help us, we maintain that money. And I think it really appropriately should come out of capital improvements since that's what it is.
I agree.
Okay. So by consent, then I will visit with Ms. Donna about that, and I'm sure she's probably listening. So we will earmark our share out of capital improvement.
Thank you.
Yeah, we've already done it. It was just really a part of clarification. We voted on taking that money out of capital improvement. Okay, good. That's all I have for Commissioner's report. Anything else, gentlemen? Okay, we'll move on. Thank you. Upper Ark, I don't have anything to report for Upper Ark.
Nothing here either.
Jake, anything? We'll move on. Administrative Assistant Items, anything, Ms. Kara?
Do you want a turn?
Oh, I'm sorry. Turn the items. Jumped the line. Yes, sir, go ahead.
I've worked with Jackie Hobby. I've written a couple of letters concerning zoning violations for her. And I've met with her and talked to her about the matter that's going to be discussed in the executive session later today in this meeting concerning a pending SUP application. And I've been working with Shannon pretty closely for the last week or 10 days because of this new Senate Bill 20-217 that goes into effect July 1, which is a nightmare for law enforcement around the state. The county attorneys and the district attorneys are scrambling to understand it and to try to inform their respective law enforcement agencies what needs to be done. And Shannon is on the agenda later. I told her, he asked if he could appear in person for this. I would ask that you allow him to appear in person. We could still socially distance. And because what he wants to talk about would be really difficult to explain over the phone, I think. So if you would allow that, I told him I'd have Kara let him know.
Yeah, I believe that's fine. I consent, gentlemen.
Yeah, I'm fine. That's why we can make room out by the water. Six feet, six feet on five.
Kara, can you let Shannon know in approximately what time you think you should be?
Thank you.
Just shoot, shoot in the dark.
There's a $100 question. I would say probably 10:30, 11, somewhere in the quarter to 11. Okay, anything else, sir?
No, no, that's it.
Thank you.
I probably should because there's been a couple of times. Was anyone finding it in the middle of the yard because they all found it?
I would ask, and I've looked briefly this morning. I didn't do a good job telling them about. I think we need a little clearer direction about our agenda. He said that. He makes a determination of what's going to be on the agenda or where. I'll continue to do some research. If you have some time, we want to look into that a little bit too on setting the agenda. I, I don't have, please take this for face value. I don't have a problem with executive sessions and so on and so forth. I'm not sure it's appropriate for the chairman to learn we're having a program grant. Ms. Nichols came in, it's, we do this every year, and she needed that document to be sent in. It was between Commissioner meetings, and so I did sign that. We have the signature letter in our board packet. So I would move that we ratify signing of the...
I move we ratify signing the EMPG grant application, or acceptance. And a letter of acceptance, and it did look a nice letter.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. We'll have discussion.
I guarantee you there will be discussion. Do you approve the second to ratify the signing of the EMPG grant? Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I...
Yes, sir.
My comment, I may completely respectfully, I don't mean this as a chastise, but we do this every year. Certainly comes in a timely manner. Why isn't it such a rush that you have to sign it without the board approval and then ratify? Well, it was not presented at a regular meeting. I find that not truly appropriate. I appreciate you taking care of it. I recognize it's routine, but it's not appropriate.
Okay. Yeah, I can't answer that exactly. I didn't ask. I think probably, I shouldn't even say after. So if I did, I would probably be speaking out of school, so I will certainly pass your comments on. Yeah, it had it been something totally out of the realm and that we had not done in the past, and that it wasn't a grant for 38,000, I might have responded differently.
Well, let me suggest something. We know this, on some things like this, there are routines. We're using that word loosely. When you got it, was there any reason why we couldn't have gotten it at the same time and understood it? Maybe you had some email questions we don't have to meet every time if we agree. We can ask Clint, there a process that we can use, Clint, that keeps us out of hot water from talking to each other?
Not if you're going to approve something, it's got to be down to public need.
Yeah, I think Commissioner Prince's point was if Meredith had this earlier, could she have gotten to us earlier and we could have dealt with it at a meeting or at least looked at it? Certainly with the pandemic going on, I'm willing to allow some grace and leeway, but your points will take into consideration. Further discussion?
Just real quick, so the deadline was when? If you hadn't assigned it, we'd have lost it, is that true?
That was my understanding.
Don't know if that's accurate.
Trying to look at the, if there was a deadline, I don't think Meredith is on the call this morning. Go ahead.
Mr. Kara, I really don't have a problem with this taking place. It's the process, kind of like you talked about, the process of putting things on the agenda. I would really like this tightened up. And if it is something that truly needs to be done, you know, in a...
If it's an emergency.
Exactly. That was the word I was going to use. If it's something that needs to be done and we don't have time, certainly we're going to take care of business like we need to take care of it.
So it's just process, I'm concerned.
Understood. If we don't keep our eye on the processes, the next thing you know, we're running helter-skelter, just like the agenda thing. So I, I acknowledge what you're saying.
Thank you, sir.
Any further discussion? Public comment? Very done, we'll proceed to vote on ratification and the signing of the EMPG grant for $38,000. All in favor, say aye. Commissioner Kanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Prince?
Aye.
Commissioner Flower votes aye. Motion carries. That signature has been ratified. Next item of business is garden club discussion of maintenance of the county buildings. I believe we had some folks on the line pertaining to that. We also have a document that was provided to us so that we could have an idea of what the discussion was about. So with that, I would turn the floor over to whoever chooses. Elaine, if you're the spokesperson or whoever is, go ahead.
Good morning. I'm Inmenden, co-president, along with Elaine Chavnon of the High Altitude Garden Club. Thank you for giving me time to speak to you today. And I wanted to start by saying for approximately 20 years, the garden club has maintained the gardens of the courthouse grounds. Over this time, our club volunteer membership and our circumstances have changed. We're now carefully evaluating our community involvement, our volunteer numbers, and time allotments. So we're offering a proposal to you today, appropriate to our membership for the courthouse garden maintenance going forward. I think you were emailed a comprehensive document for review. I'm not sure you've had time to review that. It is a seven-page document. Is that the one that you have in front of you or the proposal in brief?
I have the documents in front of me.
I do too, and I've read them. Very comprehensive.
Yeah, I have it. I'll look it up. I don't have it right now. You got it on the email there. Give me the date, I'll pull it back up.
Okay, it was, I believe, emailed to you on Saturday, the 27th, at 1:41 PM. And the source would be thehighaltitudegc@gmail.com. And I will just briefly go over the items that are contained in that document. So going back to our proposal, which we... So going back to our proposal, which we feel is appropriate for the Garden Club, the Garden Club would like to return the area of maintenance to the courthouse maintenance that is adjacent to the facade. In the in-depth portion of this proposal, we've included a bid for conversion of this area to an easily maintained area so that it will no longer be blooming and garden area as such, but something more appropriate perhaps to a municipal building. The second point of our proposal is the walkway borders, the garden areas that are lining the sidewalks north and south, approaching the courthouse from Sixth Street, will remain the responsibility of the High Altitude Garden Club and will continue the maintenance, the planting, and the care for those areas. There is a third garden area of concern that is south of the south sidewalk. We in the club refer this, to this as a circle garden. In the past, it's been referred to as a high drive garden, which, as I understand, was a suggestion of a former county agent to create this garden. Over time, this garden has changed, so now we are carefully reviewing it, and the responsibility of that area will be determined now by a number of factors. And this might be a good time to mention the lack of irrigation and the condition of the entire south lawn area, which of course has an effect on this particular garden area. So moving forward to the next part of our proposal in brief, the Garden Club is working to define our project involvement in each of our projects throughout the county and throughout the towns. And so today, we would like to request the establishment of the following three guidelines for ongoing club maintenance of the courthouse garden area. We request first that the garden, that the courthouse will provide easy access to water with a hose from an outdoor faucet to the areas we maintain from May to September. This aids us in new planting as well as weeding and general cleanup when we work. The second item we're requesting today is that the walkway gardens, which are maintained by the High Altitude Garden Club, would be regularly watered by courthouse maintenance person using whatever system is available and is being used to water the lawn areas. And the third request we have today is that the club would like reimbursement from the Custer County funds for mulch as needed for the walkway borders. This would not exceed $200 annually, but would help us as we budget for our community projects. We very much like the commissioners to consider these three items either as an MOU, but preferably as an action item. And then in following, we would, of course, like by the end of our discussions today to encourage a motion to enact these requests. If you have the in-depth proposal, we can discuss it or give you time to review it, meet you on site, however you wish me to proceed. The complete proposal, which I emailed to you, is seven pages long, but mostly contains pictures and sketches which outline and define each area of the courthouse gardens and what we are proposing for those areas.
Okay, thank you. A couple of questions I have, I guess. Number one, if you want the county staff to water the plants, why do you need access to water?
I'm sorry. Could you please restate your question? You were breaking up on this connection.
Yeah. Number two on your brief says that you would like the courthouse maintenance be able to water, regularly water the garden areas. Why do you need access to a water hose, which we have, by the way? I'm just asking.
Well, when we do a new planting, we usually water that area as we plant and as we clean up from the beginning of spring to now. It's virtually impossible to weed and do the maintenance that we need to do without access to water. It aids in cleaning up and it is, we have in the past had to carry water in in containers so that when we put in new plants, we're able to water them since, of course, the sprinklers are not on while we're working and we don't know the regularly scheduled sprinkling time for the lawn.
As long as being watered by hand, so there is not a regularly scheduled sprinkling time. There is a hose give on the west side of the courthouse building, the county building, which I'm sure you're aware of. The problem with that currently is it is susceptible to freezing because it is not a drain back style. Got some questions from the other commissioners. Go ahead, Commissioner Prince.
Mr. Chairman, I've heard you have a question. First, I really appreciate what the Garden Club does, not just for the courthouse, but for the entire community. It's a wonderful process, what they do. I better recommend that we put this on one of the two first week of July agendas to discuss. And one of the things I'd like to add on to that agenda, if I can, we have saved significant amount of money on the water lines to the Saddle Club. Maybe it's time for us to consider using some of that money that we saved to put in that expensive sprinkler system that we've discussed previously. I think it's necessary that we have a sprinkler system. I think the money was earmarked for another water project and it would fit the county real well. It would, since we've already allocated it for one and we have a significant savings, to me, it just makes sense. So I'm suggesting we put this on an agenda for first week of July, not only the Garden Club issue, which I personally don't have any issues with at all, but I'd like to include also the conversation of a sprinkler system for the county.
Okay. Yeah, I think we probably do need an agenda item pertaining to the sprinklers, which is really not germane to this item, so I think that's fine. We'll just stick that on the agenda.
It kind of goes together because we're talking about watering the plants and our personnel would do the watering, which I think is certainly appropriate, but I think, you know, it seems to just tie it together, too.
So I would ask, Ms. Kelly, if we can add consideration of a county building sprinkler system for July, I don't care which day, seventh or eighth, doesn't matter to me.
Either one, I'm fine with that. And it would make sense to, because we really can't vote to approve this today. What category is it on?
Yeah.
Is it consideration? I thought it was just discussion. Yeah, so maybe we ought to include the Garden Club proposal for the seventh or eighth and at the same time and just take care of all of it at once. It's all about beautification, grass, foliage, flora for our building.
Yeah, under normal circumstances, this would not come before a vote today, Ms. Mundon, because it's not on the agenda as an action item. It's for discussion only.
Okay. Would then it be placed on the agenda for July as an action item?
Yes.
As far as reimbursing for mulch purchase for your gardens?
Along with the rest of the stuff, yes, in your proposal, I would.
The whole plan.
Assume so, yes. So I think, too, you know, we would.
I'm sorry, but your connection is once again unclear and.
Yes, you would.
I would like to ask you, when you do have time to review the entire proposal that we're sending you or that we have sent you, that you especially give the last two pages, which are three photos taken last week of the area on the south side of the courthouse, because that directly impacts that south garden. And that is germane, I think, to the discussion, which may or may not include us, but hopefully it will, about the irrigation system.
Okay, yeah, we see it every day we come to work, so we'll be familiar with it.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time. And then we will, I guess you will ask me to continue this discussion when you let me know when we appear in July.
We're fixing to do that right now, so.
Okay, thank you.
Gentlemen, what's your pleasure? July 7th or 8th?
Which one's got the less stuff now?
Well, I don't think there's much.
I think there's only, other than staff reports, just one thing on the 7th.
Okay, let's do it. Let's start on the 7th. I agree.
July 7th, you'll be on the July 7th agenda. We'll put consideration of the High Altitude Garden Club's proposal.
Thank you very much. In the meantime, if, as you're reading the document sent, if there are questions, please know that I and a number of Garden Club members are available to either meet on site and discuss specifics of the proposal.
All right, thank you. Yeah, it would have been nice to get a list of contact people. I don't know who all is involved in the Garden Club, so.
I will make sure that I email that to Kara, if that's okay, or I can email it to all of you.
Either way, it's fine. If you send it to Kara, she'll send it to us. So if you want to just send it to the commissioners, that's fine.
Okay. I will be so immediately. Thank you.
Appreciate your time and interest. Thanks for what you do.
And can somebody please send me that?
Hello? Hello? Hi, it's Ray. Hey, Ray, it's Ed. How are you? I'm doing well, Ed. Yourself? I'm doing well, thanks, Ray.
Gentlemen, I need to remind you, we're in the middle of a Board of County Commissioners meeting. Are you calling in for public comment?
No, this is, I'm.
Okay, so you may either have the wrong number or.
Yeah.
Something's going on because you are speaking to the county commissioners during a meeting.
Yeah, sorry about that, guys. Ray, will you hang up? I'll reach out to you personally. I'm good, thank you, Ed. Bye.
I'm Sir Roger, I'm here.
Vernon?
Yes, sir, I'm figuring out which one is not supposed to be here.
That's fine. Would you just mute everyone, please? You can unmute.
Everyone is muted.
Thank you. Next item of business, discussion with the sheriff of the ramifications of Senate Bill 20-217. While we're waiting for him, Commissioner Prince, you have something?
I was just going to ask, while we're waiting for the sheriff to show up, can we take a , that's when I was waiting, um, recess?
By consent, we'll take a five-minute recess. So last item of business, discussion with the sheriff on ramifications of Senate Bill I think we'll wait for a minute and then, I don't want to move on to public comment because some public comment may have to do with that item of business, so we'll hold off on that as well. Haven't heard back from him yet.
Not yet.
Can you give him a call?
I sure will.
Thank you.
Great old 25 pages. And some of it's disturbing and some of it makes sense, so.
Like everything.
Well, I can, if you want, I can fill you in a little bit while we're waiting for Shannon.
Yeah, that'd be great.
The first concern is the record-keeping requirements. It started June 19, and I think Shannon attached a copy of a contact form that he's planning on using. I've seen contact forms, so I should turn this on, sorry. I'll say again that I'm speaking while we're waiting for Shannon to get here concerning the new legislation, Senate Bill 20-217. The immediate concern is the requirement that started as of June 19 for all law enforcement agencies to keep information regarding any law enforcement contact. And Shannon has developed a one-page form that gets the basic information, and I've advised him, I think that's sufficient. I've seen forms that have been developed by other counties that run nine or 10 pages and the record-keeping requirements, you're just going to take away so much time for the law enforcement officer, if the officer that makes the contact has to also fill out the form. And it appears that Shannon is contemplating.
Shannon, this is Kara at the courthouse. I'm just going to let you know, the commissioner's at that early. If you want to come over any time now.
Glean all that information from the written reports.
Okay, thank you.
And do that, but it would require, according to Shannon, another part-time employee just to get that information. And then there's no means of transmitting that to the state. The sheriff's office would have to save all this information. They don't even have a uniform format as to how they're going to do that, but eventually it all has to be transmitted to the state and kept in records for.
Was it to be stored at the state or stored here for?
All the, no, well, for right now, they don't send it to the state, I think, until January 1 of 2020, yeah, 2023, as I recall. But it has to be maintained here somehow in, I'm sure, electronic form. And the other, the thing that concerns me more than anything else reading through this statute is the requirements that what a law enforcement officer is expected to do during a contact if the contact escalates into a situation where there's the possibility of serious bodily injury or death to either the officer or somebody else. I mean, it's almost like the officer has to whip out a checklist and go through, am I allowed to do this? Can I do that? It's been very bad. Very discouraging for new law enforcement officers to actually take any action. And then in situations if there is, and this isn't probably going to apply here, but if there's some kind of a protest going on that could escalate, they're, you know, prohibited from using the usual means of trying to control the people, including rubber bullets or use of tear gas or anything else without jumping through a lot of hoops first. There are just a lot of restrictions. I think it's going to, going to have a lot of people say, I don't even want to try to go into law enforcement anymore and I'm going to lose my qualified immunity, you know, if they do something in good faith that turns out not to have been proper. They could still end up being sued for it. It's imposing, and of course, the other thing is the cameras, the body cameras that everybody is going to be required to wear. Shannon wants to talk about that because his posse members are non-certified law enforcement officers, but when they're acting in a law enforcement capacity, which to me includes directing traffic, providing security during parades, things like that, that they also would probably have to wear body cameras. And there's not any funding coming from the state. The statute just suggests they can apply for grants to get these additional cameras they need from Homeland Security, I guess, but it's causing a lot of headaches for law enforcement across the state. And tomorrow, there is a Zoom meeting that I'm going to monitor, which will be the county attorneys and the Colorado District Attorney's Council, where they're discussing this. And there are also some PowerPoint presentations being prepared by some county attorneys. And as soon as they're made available, I'll get those and share them with Shannon for training purposes with his own officers. And I guess that's about all I have to say until Shannon gets here.
Yeah, and I looked at his contact sheet and I emailed him back a couple of my thoughts about it. I'll voice those publicly as well. This whole piece of legislation is just ludicrous. Received demographic information on the subject is about the most asinine requirement in this legislation. What qualifies any law enforcement officer to make a determination on somebody's lineage?
And why?
And what difference does it make?
Crazy.
And it makes a difference whether they're white or black, or Asian, or other, for crying out loud. If you're going to stop somebody for a violation, you stop it, doesn't matter what color their skin is, it's just stupid.
Well, we have none to share, I believe.
Good. So, yeah, that got kind of worked up. The other thing I thought was.
I think I braced it up today. What happened?
Sorry.
Is that different?
May I finish? The other thing I thought was a little. Disconcerting about the whole contact sheet. Not only about the documentation and the data that is in here, but is it gonna be housed here, which Commissioner Canada asked, and is it going to be forwarded on? Is it just gonna be another effort of bureaucratic waste? Nothing would ever be used unless somebody wanted to file a lawsuit wrong from date or whatever. I just struggle with this whole thing, obviously, it's legislation, so. I thought we became a red flag county over the whole gun seizure thing, and I couldn't help but thinking maybe we ought to have a discussion about being a red flag county pertaining to this.
Oh, we're a Second Amendment sanctuary county, I think, is what we voted to do, and I'll read for Shannon for that discussion.
Yeah, the other thing I, I did mention this to Shannon in an email. On the subject of identifying whether the subject was a male or a female.
Doesn't matter. New York, yeah, New York recognizes 30-plus.
There you go. There you go, and I'll guarantee you, Colorado probably recognizes more than male or female, so why ask? It just irritates me. Morning, sir.
Morning.
Your stuff irritates me, I might as well tell you that upfront.
You.
Good morning. So we are on the agenda item of a discussion with the sheriff about Senate Bill 20-217. We are under six-foot restrictions in here, so.
Yeah, where do you want me to go?
Just take this and hold it and talk to it, so.
Alrighty, then.
Yeah, maybe.
I can go back here, yeah?
Come back here with me.
Alright.
I turned it on for him.
Can you hear me, Clint?
Yep.
How's everybody doing?
Thanks for asking. So, floor is yours, sir. Clint kinda took a few minutes while we were waiting to share his perspectives and a little bit of his conversations with you and what his plans are to participate in a Zoom conference tomorrow.
Okay. So, I believe I attached three things, three, uh, three documents. That contact sheet, which I believe is what you guys were visiting about a little bit there. So that, that's the data that we're now required to collect on anybody that we come in contact with on a law, on a law enforcement type contact, so. Anything from, that has to do with the law enforcement, you know, from traffic stops to investigations to, you name it, whatever, law enforcement stuff. What really makes it complex, you know, so, let's say that Kara backs into Clint at the grocery store.
No.
And Jay, and Tom, and Bill, and Bill here also, all are witness to this accident, so I respond, I contact these guys, and I, and each one of you, I talk to each one of you because you saw what happened. I have to fill one of these out for every single one of you.
And you feel qualified to determine whether they're white, black, Hispanic, Asian, or other?
Do you have to ask?
So, so you notice there's an "other" on there, right? So it's my opinion, and I've told my deputies that I would, you will never catch me circling white, black, Hispanic, I won't do it. Because, as we all know, the demographics in Custer County are, I mean, I'm gonna throw a number out there, 98.5% white. So let's say, over the course of a month, I'm just running traffic, and I contact four black individuals for speeding, you know, I write, I write a hundred tickets, but three of them were for black or Hispanic. And I put that on there, right? As a red flag that I'm picking on because 3% of all my contacts, but in yet only 0.5% of the population is that, and so, I'm not doing, that's me. I'm not telling my deputies that they shall or shall not do it in any specific way. The form is filled out the way the state says that I have to go it out.
So, is this per legislation, this stuff was required to be on your contact sheet?
Yes, sir. So, 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 I'm not doing it. Now, again, I can't tell the deputies, if they infer that a person's Hispanic and they want to put Hispanic, I'm not going to deter from that, but, yeah, you know, it doesn't really get to complain about it because it is what it is at this point, but as long as I've been a cop, you never profile, you don't profile, that's not, the law doesn't care what color you are, where you're from, what language you speak, we don't care, it's the law. And now, they're forcing us to do this, and so.
Yeah, so now, in Colorado, the law does care, right? Or we wouldn't be having this conversation.
Evidently, evidently that'd be correct, or at least the legislators that passed the bill care. They do care. But again, let's, let's.
Try to focus on the positive.
Well, there's, there's no reason you can do it, I mean, I can only see one real reason why you have to focus on differences between people, and that is, is because if we're all together, then we're much stronger than if we're separate. But I won't go any further than that. So that's, that's required now. And in the, what, the second form that I gave you, which was basically the impacts for the county, now it's gonna affect the county. Because of this, so you can imagine, you can imagine how many of these we're filling out every day already, right? The problem, the challenge is, and I believe that that's the first item on this effect on the county, is that this is a bunch of data. This is, this is gonna be a bunch of data. And right now, the state has no, they don't have a system in place to track this data, nor do any law enforcement agencies because we didn't track that before, we didn't track who we contacted. Yes, when you arrest someone and you do arrest paperwork, that information's on there, and we go usually by their identification, you know, their driver's license or whatever, to fill that out, but it's not tracked. And so, my initial plan was, is that those little contact sheets, we were going to just collect those up, and we were gonna fill up banker boxes, and then I was gonna send those to the state, because the bill does not specify that agencies have to provide that data electronically. It just says that they have to provide the data. But you and I both know that that will probably get it returned back to us and say, we have to provide it in a specific format, in a specific manner that can be electronically entered into their database. I predict that the state will have a similar system like we have for NIBERS right now, which is crime reporting, and we report that, and it goes into the Department of Justice database for nationwide, so I'm sure it's gonna be a uniformed reporting system like that at some juncture, I just don't know when that's gonna happen. So the challenge becomes, how do we get that data entered in? I don't really know the specifics because we don't have the program in place yet, but as you can imagine, I mean, I'm gonna have to have somebody that's manually entering all that, that takes these contact sheets and manually enters something.
That means what, Shannon, scanning them, typing them, it could be anything.
Probably gonna be manually typing them in, Bill, unless, unless they come up with a mobile data app or something, you know, but of course, we don't always have mobile data where we're at throughout the county, so it's a complexity. I don't tell you that I have a solution, and exactly what we're gonna need right now would be disingenuous, because we don't know what it looks like still. We just know what we have to collect, but we don't know how, there's no specificity in how we collect it or how we store it. And so right now, we're just taking these forms and we're trying to, we're trying to catalog them by month, and just keep them basically in a box, you know, so we'll have a little bit in June, because we're only doing it for a few months or a few weeks in June, and then it'll be July, August, September, and I think we're gonna have to just wait and see on this, but I'm hoping we have an answer closer to the end of the year before the budget talks start, because I don't, so that all of us will know what it's gonna look like and what it's gonna require, and you know, if it's gonna be man-hour intensive or if it's gonna be a simpler, simpler solution, I just don't know.
So Shannon, quick question. Currently. Is the sheriff's department literally writing these contact forms out longhand, or do you have those on a computer that the patrol deputies have in their vehicle?
Yeah, so they have this form that I showed you here, it's a half-sheet. So we printed it off in a full sheet, they tear it in half, and then they're just, they carry 50 in their patrol vehicle, and every time they make a stop, see, because this is all inferred, right, so this is, you know, they don't just fill it out off of somebody's driver's license, because it doesn't have their name or anything.
Correct.
So they're just, yes, they're longhand filling them out, and they're just circling, and you can tell by the way I made it, I try to make it as simple as I can, anywhere where I could just circle or checkbox, so that they weren't having to write a lot, so that it only takes, you know, maybe a minute to do. Where the time comes in, you know, is like duration of contact. Well, you usually have to go back to the CAD sheet, especially if you're on something that's longer than just a minute or two. If you're on, if you're on something for 25, 30, 40 minutes, you have to go back to the CAD sheet because you can't keep track of that, so. So then they have to go back to the office, then they have, you know, and they're generally gonna be writing a report anyway, so they're there, but then they have to bring those in, they have to look and fill out the specifics on some of those.
Remember who they, how many they talked to, if you get in a bind, or you got a lot of people, a lot of things happen, you don't know who you talked to.
Right, yeah. And, yep, so it's, you know, it's a drain on dispatch as well, you know, because maybe, maybe they, the deputy just, when they're getting ready to clear, they just say, can you tell me what time I was in contact with, you know, this party? And so that they can just do a quick math and put down the numbers, and I, but I can't imagine they're gonna be too harsh on us, you know, if it was five minutes or six minutes, I could see if it were two minutes or 30 minutes, but I don't even know the purpose necessarily in like duration of contact, I don't, but.
You have a question, Commissioner Prince?
I do. Shannon, I read the app that was submitted, and I thought it was very onerous. We have a couple of questions. It requires, find the wording, officers to do this. Are, is the posse considered an officer?
They are.
Even though they're not certified by the state as a peace officer?
Yeah, so they, they were, they're specific in the, in the bill to, that even non-certified, quote-unquote, peace officers, like detention deputies, in a lot of jails that you'll have a mix where some are certified and some are not. In our jail, we don't have any that are certified, but they fall under that as well, and so the posse falls under that as well.
And it look like, if there is a altercation of some sort, the public has a right to see the video cam, or the cameras.
Yes.
You have a 21-day period to give them that. Do you store that information now, or what happens with the, with the body cams that your deputies currently have?
So, we do, we retain all video for at least a minimum of 90 days, so we follow the guidelines specified in the Colorado, I just have the actual title in my head until we start. It's, it's required by, it's a Colorado retention, records retention schedule, and so the state of Colorado has minimum requirements. For example, if I were to just contact you on a traffic stop, give you a warning, you go on your way, the state of Colorado recommends that you maintain that for a minimum of 90 days, which we do on something like that. Then, then the deputies, every one of their body camera, the new body cameras that we have, so they have an app on their phone as well. So like, let's say you and I have a contact, when we're done, they can go to their phone and they can label the contact, and on there, if they, if they label a case number, let's say that I issue you a citation for, you know, speed, they put that on there, now that, in the program, that video is now automatically going to be stored for a minimum of, I believe it's six months. I'd have to look, I don't have it, so, yes, it's just depending on the type of video and how it's cataloged, and then also, let's say that I give you a warning for speed, which normally would be 90 days, but let's say you said something to me, like, I don't appreciate you doing this, you're harassing me, and I'm gonna complain, we'll put a note in there that, that there could be a complaint, and so then we automatically retain that for a longer period of time, so that, so that it protects you as the citizen and the deputy as well. So, yes, lots of data, as you can imagine.
Question on that same line. On TV, I heard that they were requiring body cameras not to be turned on or off by deputies. This bill didn't have any other stipulations on body cameras?
Oh, yeah. So it has, it has quite a few stipulations in there. One of the, one of the things that we have some heartache with, so as you can imagine, you know, right, so body cameras are electronic, electric devices that suffer from malfunctions on their own, and then quite frankly, operator error happens as well. I was wearing my body camera on the protest that we had, when I was walking, I bumped into somebody, turned my body camera on, I had no clue, it was on for an hour and a half. It's just an accident, right, so they get turned on or off, they can, I mean, it has to be a little deliberate, but, but, so the body camera footage, now, there's stipulations in the bill. Let's say, for example, you and I get in an altercation, and you end up with a bloody nose, or you're injured in some way whatsoever. If my body camera wasn't working, if I didn't properly activate my body camera when, before the altercation began, now, according to this, this law, I'm, I, as the officer, are automatically assume, it's automatically assumed, and Clint can give the proper, because I don't have a memory, but it is assumed that I acted inappropriately. I'm automatically guilty because there was no active body camera footage. Doesn't matter what you did, I'm now guilty. Which is going, I'm just telling you already, there's a lawsuit that hasn't been dropped, but it's going to about that aspect, because now there's no preponderance, I'm not assumed innocent until proven guilty, and so if Jay said it, that's an onerous, that's disingenuous in its intent.
Do you feel that we're gonna lose deputies over this? This sounds, I mean, if I was a deputy, and you just took away my limited immunity, and you put this onus on me if there's a malfunction on a piece of.
Can you turn your mic on, please?
I'm sorry, sir, thank you. What I was saying is, do you feel we're gonna have a significant attrition of deputies? Because I'm concerned that if it was me, I would be very concerned to do this job in terms of, I'm taking, you've taken away my limited immunity, you're putting the onus on me if there's an equipment malfunction, and this job is terrible in the first place, and I don't mean terrible in terms of what you do, but terrible in terms of, at any given moment, your life could be in danger protecting yourself or someone else. I mean, this is a very difficult job, I'm worried about. I mean, this is a very difficult job. I'm worried about deputies turning around going, you know what? I think I'd rather do X, Y, and Z rather than be a deputy. I, I'm not taking this risk anymore. Is this, do you think this is gonna be the end of this result, the result of this? Sorry, I'm not asking for political.
No, 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 I understand. Just saying, I, I think that, I think what we're really gonna see challenges, so, cops in general are pretty resilient about a lot of things, right? Just because, like you said, the nature of our job. I mean, one minute you're, you're dealing with somebody that's super thankful and they appreciate what you're doing, and then the next minute, you, you potentially can be talking to somebody that's calling your names and doesn't appreciate what you do. And, and, and so they kind of bounce. So I think, I think officers, and when I say officers, you know, I'm talking officers, deputies, all of course. I think that the ones that are in the job, I think by and large, they'll probably hang tough because we don't do this job because we're, we're gonna get rich or that we're gonna get a lot of accolades or anything like that. We do it because there's a duty to serve and, you know, people are gonna roll their eyes or, or some people do. But you really do, you, you do this because you love your community. But where I think the bigger challenge is gonna come is convincing young people to come do this job because they see all of this and they're inundated, you know, the media doesn't talk about. We don't hear on the news about any of this challenges that we already had a challenge of trying to recruit officers to come work and do this job now. Then you just added all of this on top of it. I think, I think where we're gonna find the problem, the challenge is, is that the folks that are leading law enforcement, and it could be for many reasons, this on top of the fact that it's tough on your family, it's just, it's a tough life. How do you replace them? I think that's gonna be the big, so you're hitting on it. Yeah, this, this makes that, that steep hill even steeper.
Thank you. Does the legislature reconsider this?
I, I think we will see some changes to it. I think, you know, as, uh, as I, as I, as I mentioned in here, so we rushed this through the legislature in two weeks. 140 proposed amendments to it in a two-week period. They actually had to extend the session. They were supposed to, they were supposed to close the session on Friday, was that the 16th? 16th. They had to extend it through Saturday and then into Sunday before, so that they could get the last reading and the last amendments in place, just to get it in place. Governor signs it. And it wasn't the 16th, it was maybe the 12th, I apologize. But the timeline, nevertheless. And then so much of the bill, nothing goes into effect into 2023. So what was the rush on that? And I think it was about, it was more emotion than it was reason.
As I read it, it seemed like a knee-jerk reaction to what's going on nationally right now.
Right. Because I think, look, I, I haven't heard one police officer, not one, and I, and I follow a lot of forums and stuff. Not one person has justified what started, you know, with the George Floyd incident. No, no, that was wrong and, and he's gonna go to prison for it and that, uh, those officers are, and rightly so. I'm the, I'd be the first one to stand and say, lock him up. That was wrong. They shouldn't have done that. We all agreed with it. There's no, no officers are fighting accountability. We hold ourselves accountable. And so, yeah, this is just, this just makes a tough job tougher.
No other questions?
So Shannon, is there anything you need to? You're here. You asked to be here.
Yeah. So I wanted to bring up, so there were three of us. So you, you saw the memo that I put out to all my, it was attached as well, that I put out to all my folks on some training. So we were required, we are required by September 1st of this year to have, um, comprehensive training with all of our personnel on all the changes to the bill. So I, I included that only so that you can see what all we're doing, what, what we did or what I did was I sent this out. And then every one of my employees are going to print it off. They're going to, to write their name and sign that they have read through this and they understand it. And then we're gonna put that in their personnel files just so that we have that. We're also working our, um, the whole, the whole, love the Judicial District, but with the District Attorney. She's trying to put some of that together. I know Clint's working with county attorneys. And so there's a, there's a lot of legal, um, uh, folks that are working together to get a, a more comprehensive training that then we can have an attorney do the training as well so that we don't miss any of those little things and, and we just, we really, really get it through to our folks that there's some cer, certain things that you really have to think about, that you've been doing forever. That you have, you, you can't do it. Or that you have to change the way you go about it. And so, um, I just, I shared that with you just so you can see the effects that it has on us. And this circuit is, I think, uh, this was an abbreviate, a highly abbreviated, and it was 13 pages. So that's, that's the stuff we're going over. I, I did wanna talk a little bit on your thoughts. So, uh, as Jay, as Jay alluded to, um, the, the qualified immunity and, uh, it hasn't been eliminated originally in the, in the original bill. And you remember when I came and talked to you the first time, it, it was qualified immunity was completely eliminated. That has not been, that was added back in, actually the Attorney General, chimed in on that as well. So wait, wait a second here now. Everybody, all professions have qualified immunity. So, so they did, they did change that a little bit. But, um, one of the, one of the things I think that, that all local law enforcement will see and, and the governing bodies of, of those law enforcement agencies, whether they're counties or municipalities or whatever, is because now the, the bar has been set much lower for suing police officers because now you can sue them for violations of, of their rights in state court instead of going to federal court, which is, is easier to do. But the problem, the challenge is now in part of this bill is, uh, and I, I don't wanna get in the weeds too much. You guys cut me off if you, you don't wanna hear this, but. So, you know, in, in criminal court, we have to prove a case without, with beyond, or, beyond a reasonable doubt. Sorry. So we, and that's, that's a high, that's a high threshold because we don't wanna incarcerate and find people guilty when they aren't. But in civil court, it's a preponderance of the evidence. So if there's a 51% chance that you could have done something wrong, not that you did, but you could have, then you'll, then they will rule in favor of the plaintiff and you, the defendant will lose. Well, this bill has now categorized that if a police officer is found guilty in civil court, they lose their post-certification and it cannot be renewed. The state cannot go back and renew it. And so what we're gonna find is, is that now if someone accuses me of doing something, body camera and all that, but you get a, you get, and they take me to civil court and you get a, a court with the jurors that are sympathetic to that individual and they rule against me, I, I, I'm no longer, I'm no longer pleased.
The burden of proof drops significantly and you're much more likely to be found. I don't really use the word guilty, but responsible.
Right.
Which may lose your post-certification.
And so where, where, where I was going with that is, is so now, what, because typically what'll happen is, right? So if somebody accuses a peace officer, a police officer, it happens all the time across the country. We're doing X, Y, Z. It's gonna go to court, but then the city says, we'll work. We have the potential that if we take this all the way to court, we could lose $100,000. But if we settle for, if we kick them 10 grand, they'll go away. Can't do that now. Because if I, if, if I as a police officer, um, plead no look contendet, which basically means, look, I'm, I'm not gonna fight this. I lose my post-certification. The only way it can be, the only way a plea deal now can happen is if, if the municipality and the defendants somehow agree that, and, and Clint can probably knows this or Jay knows this better than I, but you can, you can come to an, a degree, to an agreement on a settlement, but I as the peace officer are not at fault. There's a clear judgment that there was no fault by the peace officer. Or, or, or those deals don't get made. And so I think what's gonna happen is you're gonna see all these defendants, you're gonna be like, no, I'm gonna take this all the way to, because they know in civil court, they're gonna win. Cause you, I, I don't know, I'm sorry, Jay or Clint, in civil court. The plaintiff wins a lot, a lot. So, so now all these, these deals don't get made. And the officer can't settle. And the municipalities, unless they just leave, they throw a, an officer to the wind and they, they make a plea agreement without the officer's consent. So I think that's where the true cost is gonna go. I think you're gonna see insurance skyrocket on those type of things. I, I could be wrong, but I, but I just see a huge potential and, and maybe Clint or Jay wanna offer their thoughts on that.
And I don't know where CTSI is gonna come down on this, what they're willing to do, given this new potential liability.
And so that's where, and that's where the Posse falls in now because, because CTSI currently covers the Posse. Will they cover the Posse? I think that's, I think that's something that, that the conversation's gonna have and then.
And you could lose.
If they don't. I'm sorry.
You could lose more help that way.
Well, right, right. As, as I put in the email to you guys, I mean, we had 2,900 volunteer hours last year alone, which, you know, that's, that's two full-time employees with all that they do. And so, um, so where's that cost coming? One, one thing that I, that I probably will be submitting for the budget from a budget standpoint is, is the office possibly, um, providing, um, some, some legal coverage for the deputies, specifically for the 17 that I have or the 16 that I have over there at the sheriff's office between my detention deputies, all that. Um, through, um, CPBA, it's only, it's a $60 a year membership and then $10 a month. So, you know, it's, um, I have, I have it over here somewhere. You know, it's, uh, $30, $3,200 a year, um, just to help them so that, um, if someone were to accuse them of something, that they would have some, some legal assistance there to help with getting advice and how to navigate through that, just because it's become so complex. So, um, we can have, we can have further conversation about that down, down the road as budget stuff comes on. The big, the big one is gonna be buying cameras. So, uh, as, as I told you guys before, um, a few weeks ago, well, it's been a month now, I guess, but, um, so we, we signed a contract through Act 88 to buy the 12 body cameras that my, uh, that all of us are wearing now. The, the total cost for that over a five-year period was $58,000 and some change. I don't know. Now, part of that contract is, is that we got brand-new cameras and then in two and a half years, they, they replace all those cameras with new cameras. And then at the five-year mark, we get new cameras again. So it helps. It's all the maintenance. They're, they're fully warranted all the time, but they're expensive.
All right, sir.
By, by this, by this law, though, Posse members have to have body cameras when they're in uniform, they're doing their. Well, that's, we have 17 active members on Posse right now. That's about $82,000 to do a contract similar to what we did with the folks over there. But we, we could find some, some cameras that are a lower cost. We could do that. And, and that may be exactly what we have to do. Or, or what we do is we, we buy four body cameras for the Posse 'cause they go out, you know, two at a time or four at a time at, at, uh, the rodeos and some of these other functions. And then we don't do parades. We don't do any, any parade duties. We don't do any big, so that the most that are ever working at one time, Posse members. This is gonna be, this is gonna be a huge financial challenge for us because I don't know what I'd do if I don't have a Posse. Like parades, can you, I don't, 'cause people don't honor barricades. We, we know that. The poor Posse folks are out there having to babysit barricades 'cause people drive around them and so, um.
Well, I would guess in a lot of circumstances, those additional costs are gonna have to be passed on to the promoters of the activities. That scale way back on the services that the Posse provides or the Sheriff's Department provides.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's a, it's a huge.
I don't think we're gonna be able to throw enough money at this, is what I'm saying. There may have to be some other changes.
Yeah, I, I just don't think there's enough, we don't have enough money to throw. And so, so the Posse's been talking, Bill Parker's here. Bill's one of our big volunteers. The Posse does a lot of work for us. And we, we've had some talks about doing some PR campaigns and trying to get out there to see if we can maybe raise some, some money for the Posse to help fund some of this and to do some things. And literally, I think it's gonna come down to, this is gonna be a save the Posse type function because if we can't, if we can't raise some funds, you know, typically in a year, we'll raise about $4,000 in donations for the Posse. Through, through event coordinators, you know, paying for events that they do and then I'll do this PR campaign and stuff. But, um, yeah, it's, uh, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a challenge.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate your time. Yes, sir. Bill, go ahead.
Shannon mentioned that he put out a 13-page summary of this new legislation. And, um, he mentioned the words.
Handing your mic.
Read, understand, and, uh, and practice. I have, I have read it and signed my name to it. But reading it is one thing. Understanding it and practicing it is, is something at a higher level. And so I'm looking forward to some very comprehensive training that Shannon also mentioned he and his team are putting together. You gentlemen, I know, are aware that Posse is all volunteer. When somebody joins the Posse, they're on their own hook to provide their equipment. And each member spends $1,000 or more to equip himself to be a fully functioning member of the Posse. And this legislation, as I've read it and discussed it, Shannon gave us a summary at the recent Posse meeting. This moves our activities and some of our responsibilities as volunteers into that gray area between being a volunteer and being a post-certified deputy, such as wearing body cameras. And how this all leads to potential personal liability on the part of a volunteer Posse member is troubling. And recruiting post-certified deputies, as Sheriff mentioned, will be extremely difficult. Recruiting Posse members may be impossible.
And run the risk of a lot of your folks dropping out that are currently involved. So I'm not gonna deal with it. I'm not gonna subject myself to that. Why should I? A volunteer, so.
Well, and I would also add, so from just, from being the sheriff and, and my perspective too, it's, there might just come a point where I, I have to look at my Posse members and say, listen, I'm not willing to place you in a position to where you could, you know, you could be forced to do something and, and run great financial risk unto yourself. And I may just be like, listen, we can't do this. And, you know, I mean, that's a, that's a pretty heavy burden or heavy decision to make right now because, because I don't wanna put, you know, these, these great guys and gals in harm's way as Posse, as volunteers. And yet I know that if I don't have those volunteers, I can't cover a lot of these things. And yet I know that if I don't have those volunteers, I can't cover a lot of these things. And so, yeah, this has been, this has been pretty tough lately. And I know there's been some specific talk among county attorneys on what do we do with posse? How does posse fall into this? And I'm hoping that from a legal standpoint, we get some feedback too to say, hey, listen, you know, we recommend X or Y, just to help with that decision-making process.
Now, I think it begs the question by statute, Shannon, what do you have to do? Keep the peace, right?
Yes, sir, keep the peace, that's a, technically, I don't have to respond to crimes.
Exactly right.
By statute.
So...
By statute, you gotta maintain a jail, keep the peace.
This kind of legislative bull crap may force you into going back to the very basics and say, this is what we're gonna do because this is all we can afford to do. And that's gonna be a sad state of affairs, not only for our county, but for a lot of it. Anything else for Sheriff Biley? Thank you, sir, appreciate your time. Bill, thank you for coming over.
Thank you, John.
I would just, I would also like to just thank Clint for his help and giving the feedback on this as well. He's probably gotten a few panicked, frustrated emails from me, just at the whole process, not in any mind. Just, so he's had to deal with me a little bit, so I appreciate Clint's calm demeanor. He doesn't seem to ever get fired up.
If anybody ever sees him do that, we need to put out a bulletin.
He may just be a duck, you know, he's inside, he's just racing along, but outside, he's just calm as can be.
I'm pretty much just semi-comatose most of the time, given my age.
All right, thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Shannon. Okay, we'll move on. Anything additionally to come before the items of business to come before the group generally?
I agree, sir.
Mr. Camden?
Aye.
Nor do I, we'll move on, public comment. Floor is open for any comments from the public directed to the commissioners. Vernon, do we have the phones unmuted?
Hold on one second.
Thank you.
Will the next meeting be in person or a teleconference?
I'm assuming the same format.
Same format, okay.
Yeah, and we'll be that way until we decide.
So staff reports, the same thing?
Oh, sorry, we did talk about staff reports coming in one at a time.
One at a time, okay. Oh, you did, oh, okay.
Yeah, I thought Kelly had...
Sorry, I...
We good, Vernon?
Yes, sir, the phones are unmuted, there's only one person left, the 9966 number.
Okay, any public comment? Hearing none? We will move into the executive session, we will recess this meeting and move in to an executive session if that is the group's pleasure.
There needs to be a motion.
Yes, that's what I'm asking for, if it's the group's pleasure.
I move that we suspend this meeting and move into an executive session for the purpose of receiving advice from our attorney regarding an executive application.
We move the second to move into an executive session for the purpose of legal advice from the attorney. I don't think this motion's debatable. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Motion carries, this meeting is in recess and we will move into executive session. The board of county commissioners meeting will reconvene, today is June 29th, 2020, the time is 11:55 a.m. The executive session has been concluded, the participants in the executive session were clerk to the board, Kelly Camper, administrative assistant to the board, Kara Evans, county attorney, Clint Smith, zoning director, Jackie Hobby, chairman of the planning commission, Vic Barnes, Commissioner Prince, Commissioner Flower, Commissioner Camden. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matter is not included in the motion going into the executive session occurred during the executive session or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I would ask that you state your concerns for the record.
Mr. Chairman, I would state that, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I would state that during the executive session, the conversation started to go beyond the purpose of the executive session, but it was steered back, there was no prejudice involved. I've just pointed out that what we were here for was to discuss this specific legal issue and after that, the topic, the discussion stayed on point. So as county attorney, I am satisfied that there weren't any violations during the executive session.
Thank you, sir. For the record, Commissioner Prince, Commissioner Flower also indicated that they believe that the discussion was starting to migrate away from the stated purpose and those were dealt with and brought back to, I think everyone's satisfaction that we got back.
Yeah, I agree, I also said the same thing.
And Commissioner Camden? Any further statements, Attorney Smith, about staying on task or are you good?
No, I would say, as the county attorney, I would say that the executive session, which was not recorded for the purpose of me providing legal information and advice to you, did stay on topic and ultimately, the discussion was exclusively for the issue that I wanted to bring up to you. So I'm satisfied it was appropriate under the open meetings law.
Thank you, sir. If there are no other concerns to be stated for the record pertaining to the executive session, we will move forward with the next agenda item. Commissioner Prince?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we authorize our legal counsel, Clint Smith, to confer with the counsel concerning the SUP issue. And I also move that we place...
One at a time, sir.
What motion? I'm sorry?
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
We move the second and authorize the county attorney to communicate with the SUND attorney pertaining to the specialties, the pending specialties permit. Is that adequate, sir?
Thank you, yes.
Discussion? Public comment? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye. Commissioner Camden?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Commissioner Flower?
Aye.
Motion carries. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I move that we put this issue, the recommendation that was made from the planning zoning commission back on the agenda. Which one is lighter day?
7th.
On July 7th, for us to consider the recommendation and will be forthcoming.
I'll second the motion. We move the second to add to the July 7th agenda consideration of the planning zoning recommendation of approval for the SUND SUP.
Second.
Yeah, I second it, discussion. Is it the SUND SUP or Three Peaks Ranch?
It's in the suns and sun thing.
They call it the Three Peaks Ranch, that's the business.
That's the name of the ranch, but I think the application...
No, it's the name of, my understanding, that's the name of that...
Business.
I'm just asking about the applications.
Jackie said the property owners are...
Businesses don't apply, property owners don't correct.
Oh, okay, all right.
So I think the SUND attorney is the accurate description there. Further discussion? Public comment? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote on in favor of placing the SUND SUP, the recommendation, sorry, the planning commission's recommendation on the SUND SUP for July 7th, say aye. Commissioner Camden?
Aye.
Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Flower?
Aye.
Motion carries, July 7th. In the normal context of the flow of the agenda, gentlemen, are you okay with that by consent?
Absolutely.
Placement on the agenda, wherever it is, Kelly, you good? If it's the third item, that's the third item.
Where it is, yeah.
Okay, very good. Go ahead, sir.
Can I ask either Kelly or Ms. Kara to make sure that the folks who have been heavily involved in this are notified that it is going to be back on that day? So that if they choose to be here for public comment, they're welcome to and it'll be published.
And I...
I don't want to just make a public notice that it's gonna be everywhere.
At the risk of being out of order, I'll defer to counsel, I will move that D O C C notify Mr. Sudmeyer that he will be acknowledged and given time during public comment and not on the agenda as a regular agenda item.
That's fully appropriate to do it that way.
Is there a second?
Second.
We move the second to inform Mr. Sudmeyer that he will be recognized and given time during public comment and not be on the agenda as a regular agenda item at the July 7th meeting. Discussion, yes, sir?
And Mr. Chairman, will we, should we consider limiting the amount of time that any participant in this discussion, including this gentleman or anybody else, has to state their public comment?
Okay, I think it's a great question, I'm not sure it's germane to the motion, but I would like for you to follow up with that after we deal with this motion, sir. You okay with that? All right, I certainly wanna speak to that as well.
But it could have been part of the motion.
It could, yeah, but it wasn't, so...
It's not...
Any further discussion? Public comment? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote on informing Mr. Sudmeyer that he will be recognized in public comment and not on the agenda, say aye. Mr. Camden?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Flower?
Aye.
Motion carries. Ms. Kara, would you handle that for us, please?
Yes.
Let him know that it was, it was a motion in the meeting to set that up. Further discussion or items?
Mr. Chairman, I think we probably, in the essence of getting through our agendas and getting our business done, we should limit the length of public comment for any one individual to a specific time. I'll just throw out on the table, maximum 10 minutes, but I'm certainly open to any discussion.
So...
Did you move in?
No, it was not a motion.
It was a suggestion.
Yeah, I agree, we would be much better off doing that now versus doing it when there's 65 people on the phone and it seems like we're reacting instead of being proactive. I would disagree on what you're just suggested. I know you just threw a number out there on 10 minutes. Generally speaking, the Roberts rules allow for comment three minutes and then, let's, to make it a little simpler, everybody has an opportunity to speak for a maximum of three minutes. You would not be allowed to speak again until everyone has exhausted their opportunity to speak once. So if everybody wanted to speak and you wanted to respond to something, the chair could rule you out of order. So you'd use your three minutes or your opportunity to speak, either one. So you don't have to wait until nobody else has any discussion and you could ask to be recognized by the chair again. So I just, 10 minutes is a long time to sit and listen over the phone to one person.
I think three is fine.
If they can't be succinct, I would recommend three minutes, but again, it's just a number.
I'm okay with three.
So we'll, the chair will take that into consideration then at the beginning of the meeting and clarify that.
Matt, I would hope you'd make an exception for the code enforcement officer to address concerns that come to her attention.
Good.
May take her longer than that.
Yeah, I wouldn't consider her public comment, I would consider her a stat...
That's for rest.
So we can handle that differently. I would ask that, Kelly, you put on the agenda, if by consent, you're okay with three minutes.
Do you wanna just do that?
Well, what I was thinking of, if we do it now, we can put it on the agenda.
I like putting it on the agenda so there's no surprises, nobody thinks that we're trying to curtail someone's opportunity to speak. That oughta be right up here where it says public comment, I mean, it's three minutes, that should be a spat for all meetings.
Well, that would be a decision to be made by the D O C C.
Well, that's my opinion, and that's what we're voting for right now?
No.
That's what I... Finish my comment, I think we should have it three minutes. So public comment allowed on each item?
For the SUND SUP or no?
Any public comment at that meeting. So are we, are we having a little discussion here?
Yeah.
Right, so my point is, that, me, that's just, you're mentioning normal Roberts rules and we're allowing public comment on each item and we can say, limit with three minutes. Why not? I'm not great with... Keep it going on all our, not just this issue?
Put it on the agenda. Yeah, I don't agree, but that's, that's how it works. So I do agree that we should limit the comments pertaining to the SUND SUP to three minutes. Now, if we wanna address both, then we can have that conversation. If you, if you wanna change the agenda to include three minutes from here on for anybody, that's a whole nother conversation. I thought we were talking about the SUND SUP.
Let's do it for the SUND SUP.
And if you wanna change it subsequent, we could certainly consider that in the board meeting.
I'd follow three minutes for the SUND and we could just let the rest of it just sit for the time being.
Yeah, I mean, what's the whole purpose of trying to limit it? Because we anticipate a lot.
Right.
If, if somebody wants to comment on Shannon's thing, one person, is it fair to limit them to three minutes if they're the only person on the phone call? I don't know.
You can always just say you got more than three minutes at a time. I would almost say either every comment always is three minutes with the chance prerogative to say, I'm gonna suspend that for you only because you have something journeying to say, but the rule is three minutes and then you have the authority to suspend it. I like that cause it fits Roberts rules of order, we follow Roberts rules of order. I believe Roberts allows you to give someone extra time if you choose, if the chair chooses to. Not here, I don't, if the chair chooses to.
I have to research that, I don't know that. The other thing that would go along with that then is the right of second speech. We would have to enforce that. You cannot jump on public comment, say, well, let me respond to that. No, not until everybody has had an opportunity to speak.
That's correct.
I mean, if you're gonna do one, you gotta do the other.
FYI, in West Cliff, Kathy Rice has a timer, and then it's, you're done.
Right, yeah, and so that, we haven't talked about process yet, but if that's what we're gonna do on the SUP is three minutes, then I would ask Ms. Kelly to be prepared to be a timekeeper.
Be honest.
I can't do it as chairman, I'll get lost. So is that okay? If you mind doing that, I appreciate it. So are you gentlemen in agreement by consent that we need to put the three-minute time limit on the agenda before the meeting starts?
Yeah, I am, sir. Yes.
Okay, as am I.
So just for the SUND thing?
Yes, public comment will be limited to three minutes. Here's a great question then, so that public comment is, it's an action item, so we would ask for public comment prior to voting. What if they wanna comment after that, at the end of the meeting? Are we gonna adhere to the three minutes because it pertains to the SUND SUP? Or does that go away with the vote?
I don't wanna stifle anybody's opportunity to speak.
Well, they still have an opportunity to speak. I'll be gonna hold them to three-minute limit.
Yes, I think three-minute limit on anything that has to do with this particular SUP.
Regardless of where it occurs on the agenda, cause it could be during the public comment at the very beginning.
Oh, I see what you're saying. You said three minutes at the beginning and then three minutes at the end at the end? I don't have an issue with that, I'm fine. If they want, if someone wants to speak at the end for three long edits, I'm fine personally.
So I would guess the chair would be incumbent upon then making a statement at the beginning of the first public comment, if your comments have anything to do with the SUND SUP, you need to hold those until we get to the discussion and public comment of the...
I agree with that.
Good, okay, very good. So we've got that. Okay, very good. So we've got that matter taken care of. We've got July 7th. Right now, do you know what order that is? Because I know people will be asking.
It's, well, there's already one thing on that agenda, so that would be the fourth thing.
The S U P would be the fourth thing on the agenda.
Can I do it?
Because of the nature of the whole S U P thing, when would you project a pending agenda to be out?
Today.
Okay, because I know I'm going to get a phone call this afternoon and want to know when that agenda is going to be available.
And I have a question on that process. Do we still have two websites up and active?
No.
Okay. And there's people that have been calling me. I can't find the agenda. I don't know what they're looking.
It's under elected officials, under B L C, under agendas.
Right.
It's very, it's very easy to find.
User-friendly now?
Yes.
But this is a much, much better site.
Okay, I'm not.
I'm just being hard to reach here.
Okay. All right. Anything else to come before the board?
Other than adjourned, I'm a little adjourned.
Well, no, sorry. Additional items of business is what I'm asking. Okay, I'll take care of the rest of it. Public comment. Yes. Go ahead, Jackie.
I anticipate at least four to five of the people that I've been contacting over the issue coming to the meeting. All of them are, one of them's coming from out of state, two of them are coming from out of town. I think it would be a benefit to everyone if, I know it's pain to give a time.
Okay. Go ahead, sir.
Oh, never mind. It's a telephone.
I'm not sure I want those people in here.
It's a telephone.
No, no, it's a telephone. She just.
Never mind. Never mind.
Well, they may still want to know about what time they should call in.
Yeah, that would be great.
Your question's legitimate, but I was going to follow up with number one, let's make a decision. We've already said we're going to continue the format of live commissioners and appropriate personnel and staff and then teleconference and Zoom. Is that my agreement? Commissioner Canada, you agree with that?
Yep.
Okay. So that's the other thing. We're going to have to make sure everybody understands they're not going to be allowed to walk in here.
You know, that's not a bad thing to just put on the website when you post the agenda. It says it's limited because.
Right. We kind of do that in a way because we post a teleconference number, but somebody from Denver, i.e. their attorney, may not know that.
I can just add on there, no, no public allowed in the.
For now.
Yeah.
For public, we can put something on there.
Yeah.
Personal attendance is limited. You cannot come. You must dial.
Not limited, it's not allowed, right?
That's what I mean. You must be, you must dial participants.
So Jackie, I don't know how to answer your question really. Mr. Jackie?
Did you restate?
It's the fourth, it's the fourth item on the agenda.
I'm not comfortable putting a time on. I don't want to feel like I'm rushing. And any other items, you know, it's important to you, you'll just have to sit and wait. I'm sorry. That's how I feel.
We used to have projected, projected times.
Yeah, we took them off.
Took them off. That's right. Couldn't do it.
So a couple of other things then. Public comment? Have you had something, sir?
Yeah, I'm not sure if there will be a public comment or not. I wasn't sure if you were still in your meeting, but I just got out of the Board of Education.
Oh, okay. A public comment would be perfect.
And with a whole lot of members of the community involved and a lot of discussion back and forth, came up with the unanimous decision to approve the Substance Abuse Prevention Grant.
Hold on, folks. Sorry. I can't hear.
Why don't you give him a mic? He's got to make it public anyway. Talk into a mic somewhere.
Oh, I hate.
There's one in the back.
I do not like talking to microphones.
Sorry, I couldn't separate.
I hear, I hear.
Just say it loud.
All right. So just, just to go back to what I just said, I just, just came out of the.
Get it close to your mouth.
To the Board of Education meeting. And with a lot of public comment, the five members of the Board of Education unanimously vote to approve the opposite behavioral health grant, the half a million dollar grant. And that is for the Substance Abuse Prevention Grant and that is for the Life Skills Management, the Life Skills Curriculum. That is going to be also pending upon county commissioners. So I came over here not knowing if you're still in the meeting or not, discussing your privately or publicly. Troy Baumgartner, he's still over there, I believe, but I know he's been in contact with a lot of you guys regarding this. So I think he was going to be on his way over here soon as well, as well as Joe, Principal Vergilio.
Commissioner Prince, go ahead.
Excellent. So. Will the Board of Education make a formal request to the commissioners for us to, what is necessary for us to get on board with your program?
I believe so. The president would probably get with you. I know that the deadline is actually on July 1st. So I don't know if you'd or vote would need to be on record. I would assume so.
Yes.
If you need to hold a special meeting. But I know that Troy Baumgartner, he'll be the one, if you have additional questions, if you need more details, if you have anything that you're unsure or unaware of, that he'll be able to provide those answers.
Thank you. So I wonder if.
I might be able to answer some questions too, if you have some, but Troy knows more.
Yeah, so you are going to be part and parcel as the administrator of that grant.
I, we do not have an administrator hired. I'm not sure if that would be me. And you would be the health teacher. I don't know if the health teacher would be considered.
Because the grant is to hire somebody.
Correct.
But you are also going to be part of that.
Yes.
Administration of that.
Yeah, I'd at least pay hours per week paid for by that grant.
We didn't open up.
Do you want this on the call? Pardon?
We don't run out on the call.
Yeah. So I think, you know, probably our best bet would be to schedule a very special meeting today. Now, we schedule a special meeting maybe for tomorrow.
It'd be 24 hours.
And then we'd have a 24-hour notice and we could meet tomorrow and take action.
I agree.
Hopefully Patrick was willing to convey that back to them that we're willing to have a special meeting and take action, but you better have something in front of us. Right? The Board of Education, I'm talking, not you. If the school board doesn't have something in front of us, then.
So the earliest we get it on would be 1 o'clock. Today, that's 24 hours. We could do a meeting at 1:00 tomorrow.
Correct.
All right.
12:30, whatever we decide.
Yeah, 12:30. It could be 12:30.
All right. I'm not sure if they're taking lunch or not, but I can ask Troy and Joe if they can, if they're still talking.
The conference has not started. If you are the host, please enter your four-digit host code to open the conference.
He should, he should.
If you are not the host.
So, but they did vote to go ahead with it.
Yeah, unanimously, all five.
And so we, as the Board of County Commissioners, believe then we need a request from them for us to act in whatever capacity.
Understand what our role is.
Is that how you see it, Commissioner Prince?
Yes.
So I would move to schedule a special meeting tomorrow at 12:30.
I'll second it.
Tomorrow being June 30th.
12:30.
It is election day, but.
Yeah, I may not be able to be in it. I, and none of my staff will, so Cara, you may be the one. I'll have to.
You'll make Cara the king.
I'll have to.
It would last less than 15 minutes.
Oh, five minutes.
If it's not going to last, if you can promise me that it's not.
No way. Cara can do it. I hear promise. Nothing bad.
Well, I got things to do.
You know, number one, I guess it's, it's our meeting, but we're inviting somebody to come make a presentation, so it's hard to say. But I wouldn't anticipate it being any more than 15 minutes. I think they're going to say, yes, this is what we want you to do and we decide to do it or not do it.
I agree. I, I just, before we rubber stamp something, we just need to know what our obligations are. So I, I'm fine with 12:30 tomorrow.
Further discussion?
Need a motion to effect?
I moved in Bill Sanders.
I'll acknowledge.
You were looking at your.
I was looking at my calendar to see if I could cover.
Public comment. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of scheduling a special B O C C meeting for June 30th, Tuesday, June 30th, at 12:30 p.m. Say aye, Commissioner Canada?
Aye.
Commissioner Prince?
Aye.
Commissioner Flower, aye. Motion carries. Any further public comment? Now that we're back on the phone. Hearing none, chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move that we adjourn. I'll second it.
We move the second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye, Commissioner Canada?
Aye.
Commissioner Prince?
Aye.
Commissioner Flower, aye. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.